Next question goes first to John San Giovanni. How do you propose strengthening the budget specifically in the areas of increased taxes, expense reduction, and consolidation of services?
First of all, I don't believe we need to increase taxes if we can increase the corporate tax base. So we'll roll back again to rolling mill. You know, that that produces some corporate taxes that I think help generate the funds we're looking for. Again, I want to keep services in place. I believe the citizens of Cumberland, in particular police, fire, and EMT are valuable services that we need to keep. So I think we need to find ways to fund that. General tax increases, I don't know that that's exactly necessary, although I understand services are getting more expensive. Go back to the economic development piece. If you could get some corporate tax base going and generate some larger funds, many more. If you look at rolling mill, if you look at the tax base there now as compared to what it could be in the near future, some of Cumberland's financial ills automatically go away. So those types of developments work. I do believe we need to look at some other pieces of city government and possibly, possibly decide on a better plan to provide those services to our citizens. Now, keep in mind that there's county and city monies spent for the same thing. If you live in the city, you pay for snowplow. I don't ever see a red truck come through my neighborhood. I see the white truck, which is the city truck. So I believe that those services are valuable and are needed. I think we should support them. I think we should find ways creatively to continue to pay for them. And I would support anything that would say how we can get that money through basically a corporate tax base that I think is very important. I do not want to move anything at this point. I'd like to study more, have some more information as to what the value is of consolidating services with other governmental agencies.
Thank you, John. Ben?
Well, and people start a city or move to a city they go to for services. And so we all know people go there for police, fire, those are the main things, road, infrastructures, and second thing. The tax base over city pays for that. So what you really asking is how do we increase the tax base? To do that is look at the buildings that you have and how they're used. And I've driven through this town, and I've seen a lot of commercial buildings that are either not utilized or underutilized. And I'm thinking, if you have a factory, not based in Cumberland, but elsewhere, that needs to expand, the economy is growing slowly, cautiously, then they're looking for maybe a small building where they can do some subassembly without having to regroup and build a whole new factory because they're not willing to do that as of yet. So those buildings come into play. The problem is we have some of our zoning laws that prevent them from being used. So this is what I want to focus on, is change the law, make sure these laws that were intended to be good for the people don't adversely affect the development, economic development of our city. And I think they do in instances. So I want to remove those obstacles and see if I can find some people who are willing to do some work in those buildings. And then we also get some work for our own citizen here in the city. Because if you create work inside Cumberland, you not always are ensured that people from Cumberland will get those jobs. Anybody can apply for those. And you can, of course, not discriminate, but you can do something that'll make it easier for people in Cumberland to get those jobs. And that will definitely increase the tax base and therefore increase our tax income. When it comes to costs, some of the costs we have a hard time with, like the drug and forth with the police and our fire department especially, we'll have to go to our delegation to see if we can do something about that.
Thank you, Ben. Dave?
When I came on four years ago, shortly prior to my election, we were probably very close to being on the verge of bankruptcy. We came in, we restructured our debt, and since then, we've continued to use fiscal discipline that's been absolute. At the city level, we have continued and continue now to cut positions and areas through attrition. Again, I'll mention on the rolling mill, this not only adds revenue to the existing sector, but sectors around it by propping up surrounding neighborhood values, et cetera. So any types of projects, we can look at this, the Baltimore Street project, that's going to help increase revenue. It's going to drive revenue for downtown Cumberland. I always believe and always open to more ways that we can consolidate with the county going forward, possibly in the future, could potentially be with EMS or some type of overlap with fire, et cetera. And I hope to have more cooperation in economic development with the county going forward also.
Thank you, Dave. Eugene?
Okay. I want to say this first of all, when it comes to police and fire and EMS, I don't want to see that cut at all. I built a new home about three years ago in South Cumberland. I've lived in every part of Cumberland. And I could have built it outside, I had the resources, I mean, you know, I could have built it in West Virginia, I could have built it outside the county. I built it in Cumberland because I love Cumberland and I know what it has to offer as far as those types of services. And I talked to another person that about the same thing. And then what they said was, you know, I mean, I don't mind paying a little more taxes because I know that if something goes wrong within a minute or two, EMS is going to be at my door, or the police is going to be at my door. So I do not want to cut services at all. And that's just something I will not do unless it's something we, there's no way out. Also, you know, and as far as the rolling mill project is concerned, again, I want that to work. Like I said, I don't want to step on people that's there, but I want it to work. But I, all I've ever heard was, it's going to be a restaurant, it's going to be some parking areas. I talked to another councilman, not Dave, I talked to another councilman, and he told me, I've just been told this other thing's coming, but I don't know. He doesn't know either. And that's part of the problem, if we let people know a little bit more what's going on, maybe something's coming that we don't know is going to be great, and that'd be fine with me. But what I'd rather see in there is talk to the Walmarts, talk to the Amazons, hey, they got distribution centers, they got warehouses, what do you need? What do we have to do to get you to put something here? You know, that's what I want to see happen. I mean, because we can't sustain our tax base of minimum wage jobs. We have to get jobs to pay in the mid-teens and up, and that's what I'd want to see done.
Thank you, Eugene. Joshua?
Yeah, so I would remain focused on the Willowbrook Health Corridor, the downtown redevelopment project. I believe that there's a lot of initiatives and incentives that are in place now to draw in businesses that are looking to relocate. I differ with Eugene as far as calling in Walmart and Amazon and stuff like that. I don't, I don't really believe that that's where our town should be. I hear a lot of stuff about bring back these manufacturing jobs and stuff like that, and I'm all for that. But small business created 64% of the new private sector jobs last year, and I think that small business is where it's at. I think that people, people are really starting to care about small business again, and especially my generation believes that, that there's something of value there to be able to go speak to somebody who is knowledgeable about something in particular. So I really believe that Cumberland could thrive on that small business dream, and a lot of people could, a lot of people could benefit from that. As far as cost cutting and stuff like that, I don't really believe in consolidating services. I believe that one, just one minor way of hopefully bringing in a little bit more money is we have these ambulances that are going out all the time on these drug calls. I want to know where they, where those bills are and why aren't they being more enforced? I don't know if legally you can enforce them a little bit more, but also need to reduce the housing inventory, and I think that rolling mill is going to kind of help with that and increase that tax base, so.
Thank you, Joshua. Next question goes first to Ben Walters. Are current public safety personnel staffing levels sufficient to ensure the safety of our police, fire, and EMT professionals and our citizens? Why, why not?
If you go back to the original staffing, based on the demographics in Cumberland, without the massive drug problem, at least a large drug problem that we have right now, it was fine. So we get outside influence that throws us off. The staff of the fire department has been reduced a little bit, and that means now that when an ambulance goes out, we also have to send a fire truck out so enough people go to the scene of whatever incident there is. So that doubles up on the people. So I was wondering if they had maybe a smaller vehicle to take, but no, the big truck has to go because that person may be called out later and already be on his way. I understand all that, it makes sense. So our costs are not really driven directly by the people of Cumberland, I think, besides that, but mostly by the drug problem that we have right now. And that will not stop until the federal government steps in. There's no way we could ever generate a budget on any tax base to combat that. We need federal interference. And I mean by that, we need to stop it at the border, stop the drugs from coming in, those items. And hopefully, when that starts, then the state will help us out temporarily to clean it up the rest and work from there. It's not just, it's the heroin drug that's doing it right now. There's already a new drug out. Once we fight the heroin, the new one is out, you make it in your kitchen, and it's devastating. So we have debts possibly to look forward to. I hope not. Police is at a, I would say, minimum standard right now. I've driven with these guys, and I tell you, what they do with their time and their equipment is amazing. I was duly impressed. Some of the problem we have there is that when they arrest somebody and have to go through the full, go to the police station, to the courthouse, and to the ACDC, that takes two hours. So what I will propose is central booking system whereby the police drops them off, immediately go back to work, and then the paperwork and everything else is done by people who are non-direct police officers.
Thank you, Ben. Dave?
Regarding fire, you know, obviously, we all know that public safety uses a great deal of the city budget annually. But in our fire department, we have cut staff over the years as population has decreased in accordance. I've done ride-alongs with them before, and I can tell you, the number one ambulance, it just doesn't stop. And drugs now are driving these calls more than anything. And the police, I'd like to see more police on the street as budget permits. It's been said time and time before, everybody from our state's attorney to Jimmy Piles has stated, you know, we can't arrest our way out of this problem regarding the drugs. There has to be a multifaceted approach to this, anywhere from education, which obviously takes time to work through the system, to arresting people. I'd like to see some revision or possible repeal of the Good Samaritan law because I think it's prohibiting our police from doing their legwork and finding where the drugs are coming from. But I would also, in the future, I'd like to look at the potential for like a countywide specific drug task force that does nothing else but trace and track where the drugs are coming from and the potential for, you know, finding a way to make that work and to fund that within the upcoming years.
Thank you, Dave. Eugene?
Stu, repeat that question one more time, please. Are the current public safety personnel staffing levels sufficient to ensure the safety of our police, fire, and EMD professionals, EMT professionals, and our citizens? Why or why not? Okay, no, they're not currently. Like I said, I haven't rode along with the, I have not rode along with the EMS or the fire, but I have rode along with the police. The police work 12-hour schedules, and believe me, a lot goes on in that 12 hours when I was with them. And what happens also too is that I found out that we have lost several police officers because we train them, we send them down to the academy, get them trained, and we lose them to the county and all because, you know, they go to a better work schedule, you know what I mean? So I'd like to see us taking, come up with a plan, well, first of all, I said, we need to, we need to not let them have to work as hard as they're working right now. We need to do something there. And more police is the answer, but we can't afford that at the time, I understand that too. So that's where it comes that we need to get our, our tax base up so that we can, you know, afford to hire more policemen and lessen the hardship on our police that are out there. That's all, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Eugene. Joshua?
Yeah. So I think fire and EMS is definitely very, very busy. The police staffing issue, I was under the impression that there, there are a few more in the academy that will be coming in soon. I could be wrong on that, but I'm pretty sure that there are a few more. And I believe with that, they may be able to cut back that 12-hour work shift. Once that 12-hour work shift is cut back a little bit, I really, I really want to see the police be able to make that personal connection again. Whenever I was a kid, I remember you had, you had an officer that kind of worked your neighborhood, and we don't really see those familiar faces anymore. I'd definitely like to see that, that come back. I don't believe that there's necessarily a safety issue as far as the general citizen, but there's a huge safety issue whenever it comes to the opioid problem, the over prescriptions, people selling the pain pills and creating more addiction and stuff like that, definitely, definitely needs to be worked on. Secondly, I think that a lot of these problems come back to neighborhood leadership. I don't believe that we have people in every neighborhood that's discussing these issues and discussing it with their kids. I think that there needs to be more awareness about the epidemic and, and more targeting and weeding out the drug dealers. I think, and with some more of that community leadership, I think that we can find where those drugs are coming from and why these kids are getting hooked on it and stuff like that, so.
Thank you, Joshua. John?
Well, I believe public safety is an issue, and I do believe that a little bit more could be done. I would hope we could find ways to finance, and I hear, I agree with Josh, there are officers in the academy. So that would enhance what we have, and I think it would help if we could cut those 12-hour shifts. Working with the police, and I've done the real deal, I've been out with those police officers at 3:00 in the morning, going to these homes and seeing what we see. So I respect what they do. I think they need help, and I would very much support any plans that would help them with their workload. EMS, fire, again, got to have them, believe that. Safety issues, I think that they're well-trained, I believe that they know what they're doing, I believe the police officers know what they're doing, I need that, I believe they're doing well. Could we use more? Of course. Again, the problem is how do you pay for it? So we have to increase the tax base, and I understand that as well. Comes to the drug issue, which I think is driving up all the costs because, again, I'm employed at Social Services. I have seen the fallout from the drug problem. The number of kids in foster care has increased, has doubled since the first of the year, all related to drug issues. Police are taxed, EMS are taxed to get to those people to help. So what do we need to do? We need to come up with a plan. Again, everything's a plan. How do you get, provide the best results with the resources you have available? I think it can be accomplished in a variety of ways. Back to the drug issue, I think the governor has a task force that's starting to work on that. I think we should rely on what comes out of that. I believe that there, it's beyond Cumberland, the drugs come here somehow, so we got to find the sources and try to cut that off. If we could, and I believe in a triangular approach, it involves education, it involves treatment, and I know people don't like to hear about the treatment process, but you have to treat those who believe they can recover from their addictions. And of course, I do believe in some punishment. I think that that part needs to be addressed as well. You don't ignore that, you just provide the education, you provide the treatment, you provide the prosecution. Thank you.
Thank you, John. This will be the last question prior to closing remarks, and it goes to Dave Caprere Is parking an issue in the city, specifically in the central business district? Why or why not? And if so, what is the solution?
You know, you've heard the analogy numerous times that if you park at one end of the mall or the other downtown, you could walk the equivalent of parking at the end of the Walmart parking lot and back. I, personally, I don't have an issue. I never have when I go downtown. We take the kids downtown a lot to go get hot dogs and everything else. So I've never had a problem finding parking, adequate parking downtown. Every now and then, you might have to park a little bit farther away and walk a bit. And, you know, I think utilizing the parking garage downtown, I think we're looking at new ways to do that and new ways to expand parking in the surrounding areas of downtown. There has been public meetings and council meetings going ahead to address the parking issue. So I think we're looking at new, new ways to address this issue, not to mention, you know, the possibility of the mall project, which will lead to pull-up parking in front of most of the businesses downtown. It won't be a game changer, but it will allow people to pull up in front of the businesses along Baltimore Street and in the downtown mall. So some of it, I do believe is perception, depends on how, you know, if you feel like walking half a block or so. And I, like I said, personally, I've never had a problem with, with parking downtown.
Thank you, Dave. Eugene?
I'm going to make a statement here that I can't say is 100% true, but I've talked to a couple people and like, when it comes to parking, the parking garage down there, my understanding is that all but the top level is leased out. So that creates a problem for people to want to shop downtown. And we're, let's face it, we're a lazy society, people don't want to walk, people don't, they want to be able to get as close as they can. So we need to address that there, and if it is leased out, then if it's leased out to some of the businesses there, let the businesses move their people out a little further and let the people that want to come and spend money be able to park and be able to, you know, get downtown. And like Dave said about opening up the mall, one of the things they did say was they would have parking on the sides down there. It'd be limited parking, but that's great, that would give people a chance to maybe get out, get in, maybe purchase something, and increase our income down there. Myself, I'm like Dave, and I have a problem with walking. I mean, I can park clear up there, far into the GB parking lot, and I can walk clear down the other end of Baltimore Street, it doesn't bother me. But like I said, we are a lazy society, and there's people that don't want to walk at all. And plus, we have a lot of handicapped people. Our areas is, we got a lot of old people. I mean, I'm getting there, I'm 65 now, you know what I mean? So I'm getting there. And so, you know, they can't always walk, they can't always get there. So we need to make sure that when, that we create, you know, better opportunities from the park down there. And I'd like to see also, I think it costs too much to park downtown, too.
Thank you, Eugene. Joshua?
So, so I agree with the, the walking distance may not be much further than what you would, what you would walk at Walmart. But I'm going to touch on, on the handicap parking, there, there's not a lot of that, there's not a lot of accessibility for people that are handicapped or elderly. I run a business where I sell dog food. Could, I kind of look at downtown whether I could run my business there, and I couldn't. I can't expect a 70-year-old woman to carry a large bag of dog food from one end of the mall to the other. So, so I kind of look at it like that. Can every business thrive in that environment? And I don't believe that it can. Another thing is, is Walmart has carts, and the mall does not have that option. And I've, I can say that I've drove around the block a couple times. It's 90 degrees out, maybe you have a meeting, and, and you're sweating by the time you get there. I would love to see more parking a lot closer to the businesses, and with that parking comes more visibility, too. So, so absolutely, I think that, I think that a lot of those issues would be, would be taken care of with, with that new development project.
Thank you, Joshua. John?
I believe downtown has some parking issues. I agree that, yeah, I don't mind walking either, but for those who choose not to walk, there should be an option. And I believe that when we, the mall idea with, with opening the mall with some inlet parking facilities, I think that works well. I see it on Mechanic Street and Liberty Street, and it works well. The parking garage itself, yeah, there are some limitations to it. I park in one of the parking garages that has reserved spaces. It doesn't mean that, that after-hours and weekends and holidays that we couldn't adopt a plan that allows that to be free parking space. I can't see why that wouldn't work. I do believe that we should look at every other possibility. ICC Biz is pretty willing to open up their parking lot to public parking when they're not working during the day. Maybe the same thing could happen with the Times News that have kind of locked out that parking lot, which offers God knows how many parking spaces. So I think we're back to what serves Cumberland the best and how do we get to that? I do believe we can, we can overcome the parking piece. Parking garages are available and do have to walk a little bit. Again, for the elderly person, the inlet parking, the new ideas downtown, probably will work. I think they'll work. So again, let's try it before we condemn anything, and let's look at other possibilities. Let's look at those private lots to see. I understand there could be a liability issue, but again, another workaround is always possible. You can always talk things through and come up with better plans or better ideas and see what best serves the people. And there may be people in businesses interested in helping out. Got to ask first. I think it's time to move in that direction.
Thank you, John. Ben?
Yeah, the, the main parking garage or another armada is, I think that's the topic. Parking garages are not cheap for cities, their insurance cost is staggering. I think the total intake on parking fees in Cumberland does not come up to the total cost of operated parking spots, parking meters, and the garage. I don't think it is a question of parking availability, the parking is there. It's a question of free parking. People enjoy free parking. And the only way to get to that point, to help out with that, is like the private lots that they help out. But they're not going to do it without having at least some kind of a fee because you have to repave and restructure your parking lots. Opening up the downtown mall for a couple of parking spots, I don't think it's going to alleviate the idea of we need more parking, there's not enough parking, because I used to park there at 5:30 in the morning at the club car for breakfast, but at 10 o'clock, there was no way, it was filled up, you couldn't park there anyway. But if you want to open it up for, say, taxi cabs and electric taxi cabs and that, and for some handicap spots, I see that coming. That would be a good idea. The rest, yeah, we have to charge for parking because of the, the high cost of operating a parking garage, there's no other way. But maybe we could do it by reduced fees and increased traffic that way. Maybe have specials on Thursday night, free parking, that kind of thing. There are options that we have to look at, but basically, there's an operating issue. I don't think it is really assured for parking spots.
Thank you, Ben. It's now time for closing remarks. Closing remarks will start with Eugene Frazier.
All right, first of all, I want to thank you for having me here and giving me a chance to talk. I'm one of them kind of people that, I'm not a very great speaker, you know, I'm better off if you talk to me one-on-one. And so I invite any of you at any time to talk to me one-on-one. I love Cumberland. Like I said, I was born and raised here, raised my family here. How much I love Cumberland, like I said, I could have built a house someplace else, but I didn't. One of the things I do know is this here, is that Cumberland, you know, obviously, our predecessors didn't do a very good job because we wouldn't be where we are now. So do I have all the answers? No, I don't. Trust me, I don't. But what I will do is, I will go and find the answers. I plan to go to other areas that are doing better than we are and ask them and see what they're doing, you know what I mean, that makes them do better than what we're doing. We need jobs, and we've all expressed that up here. But, you know, I'm not going to turn down any job. I'll take a McDonald's job, I'll take a Roy Rogers job, but we need jobs that pay better. You can't make it on minimum wage, unless it's $10 an hour. You know what I mean? We have to work on getting jobs here that pay better so that that's what's going to help our tax base. And once we get the jobs, with the jobs will come people and people that will be able to afford and buy homes and increase our tax base that way. And I'll talk about the drug problem just for another second, too, and this here is, we've had up to date 28 deaths so far this year and 272 overdoses. You know, it's just a norm now. I mean, I pick up papers, it's normal to hear that. So I want to address that problem because I have grandkids, and I know you have kids and grandkids, too. I want to address that problem and work with county and state agencies and see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. Joshua?
Yeah, being a business owner, a homeowner, somebody that has bought a bladed property, actually just a couple doors down from the house that I grew up in. I saw that house, whenever, it was a decent house, and then I saw it go downhill over the years, and always kind of dreamed of, of taking that house on and making it my own, and that's what me and my wife have done. We also built a very successful business in Cumberland. We started with nothing, neither one of our families had very much money, and we've made, made something of our lives. And I definitely, I love the, the community I grew up in. I care a lot about Cumberland, and I believe that it can definitely be an even better place than what it is now. I think that once you get some of these, these issues such as drugs and, and stuff like that under control, Cumberland is already a pretty wonderful place to live. We don't have a lot of the worries and stuff that you have in some of the larger cities. And I don't want those worries here, and I want to stop them before they happen. And I believe that a lot of that comes down to community leadership, and I think that that's where I really specialize, and I think that that's where I really set myself apart. I've worked extremely hard for the community that I live in, and I think that we've made big strides. So I want to bring, bring that same kind of feel to City Hall.
Thank you, Joshua. Thank you, Joshua. John?
Well, thank you to the chamber for allowing us to come this evening to speak to you, answer the questions. Um, for myself, I'm a lifelong resident of Cumberland. I certainly believe in this town. I've never given up on Cumberland, Maryland, never will. I've raised children here, lived here my entire life. I, like Eugene, could have moved many times, have never left this town, never. The next time I leave is when they put me somewhere and hopefully that's in the city limits. Just teasing. Um, on a serious note, on a serious note, I believe in progressive, positive government, local government. I believe we can get it done. We are on the cusp of making some major changes in this town and it's time to, time to move forward. Um, had somebody say to me, well, we've always done it this way. And I said, yeah, and look what always done it this way has gotten us. So it's time to move forward. I certainly believe and I will put forth every effort to make sure that Cumberland is foremost in my mind, foremost in my actions and foremost in what I believe in. Um, from a personal note, I plan to retire if I'm, uh, fortunate and lucky enough to be elected to this position. Uh, I plan on devoting all my time to the city of Cumberland. My wife may think a little differently of that, but we'll see. We'll get over that hump. Um, I'd also like to just address the fact that we should never give up on a town that we've invested all of our time. And I think we're all in favor of making sure our town succeeds. I think we should continue along that path. It would be my intentions to give everything that I have to make sure that's where we go. And again, like some other people have said this evening, I don't have all the answers either. But I would like to rely on some of my abilities and skills and what I've learned over the past forty-one years in working in government and put that to good use for the city, for the, for whatever is best for the largest group, not for a few, for everyone. It's important that we address everyone when we talk about how Cumberland progresses. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Ben?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, came to Cumberland, um, nineteen seventy-seven, a long time ago for a job. Seemed as simple as that. The idea was stay for a half year, build some experience and go somewhere else. So, um, a couple of years later, got married and here we go. So I've worked there for about nine, ten years at the airport and got a job in Ohio because the airport didn't work anymore. But I stayed in Cumberland. And initially it was just for a while because Ohio is where you work is where, normally where you would go. My job changed. I did not have to live in Ohio anymore. And, um, so we had the option to move anywhere in the world and keep my job. And we selected Cumberland for the same reason everybody else here that's on this table stayed in Cumberland. It is really a great town. And there's no better town that I could wish to raise my children. And I think that spirit is still here, has not gone. The people are still the same. We don't have the big city problem. We have a, their problem, we have the drug problem, the police, we have the budget, all those things, but not like the big cities. We don't have that. So, um, flying around for twenty-six years all over the world, mostly domestic, I have learned so many things from other cities, how they have done and come up with their solutions to their problems, very similar to ours. We're not the only town that lost all their industry. Uh, most of them have done the same thing. So we're talking parking, the way Boise did parking solution is amazing. We're talking blight control, which is one of my heart issues. The way Tampa did blight control is absolutely stunning how they come up with it. They did the same in Indiana, Illinois. So new ideas that have not been tried here, I want to bring them to Cumberland. I know they'll work. And I'm now retired, so I can devote my full time on Cumberland and that's what I intend to do.
Thank you, Ben. Dave?
I would like to, uh, thank my fellow candidates who have given much of their time and effort to a common goal. I would like to thank the Chamber, FSU and AC for tonight's event. And I'd like to thank all of you who voted for me four years ago. Uh, it has been an honor and a pleasure to serve you. Being such an important part of your lives has been a very special part of mine. My families and our business, which has been in the city of Cumberland for a hundred and ten years now. The reason I'm running again is simple, to continue and finish what we have started. Paving more streets, taking out more blighted properties each year while revitalizing downtown and re-establishing neighborhoods remain a priority. When I was here four years ago, the two biggest topics were Memorial Hospital and Canal Place. As of now, Memorial Hospital has been razed, Canal Place shops are full and the work at Canal Place is continuing on schedule. These and so many other issues is why I feel strongly about serving another term. I'm confident in the direction our city is going and don't believe that we can stop now. And that's why I'm asking for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. That concludes our forum. I again would like to thank, um, Chuck Dickin, his staff, uh, at WFWM Radio and Frostburg State University. I'd like to thank John Bone, his students at Allegheny College of Maryland as well. Um, and on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, its board of directors, um, I would like to thank you, the five candidates, David Caprere, Eugene Frazier, Joshua Grice, John San Giovanni and Ben Walters, um, for participating in this forum, um, and also for putting yourselves out there to make a difference. Um, wish you all the best of luck. Um, I would like to remind our citizens that early voting begins on October twenty-seventh and concludes on November third. And of course, the election is on the November eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Again, thank you all very much for participation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stu.